Okay, it's, what is it? 6:05. I'll call the meeting to order this evening. We'll start with a land acknowledgement and councillor Stewart is going to provide that tonight for us. Councillor Stewart, over to you.
The land on which the city of St. John or Mennequist is situated is the traditional territory of the Lewistowake. The Lewistowake, along with their indigenous neighbours, the Mi'kmaq and the Peskotmikate, signed peace and friendship treaties with the British Crown in the 1700s that protected their rights to lands and resources. Let's take a moment to reflect.
Okay, I'll ask everyone to stand, please, for the National Anthem. Okay, so before we get started tonight, we're going to try to get out of here on time because we've got the big game tonight. And I've got my shirt on. "Lone to Me" by Aaron White. And tonight, the Oilers are going to try to complete a comeback in game seven of the Stanley Cup. And I was reading up a little bit about this, and there's only has been one other team previously that overturned a 3-0 deficit to lift the cup, and that was when the Toronto Maple Leafs scored it from the Detroit Red Wings in 1942. So, go Edmonton tonight. So hopefully, we're going to get a win. Okay, next item, City Clerk.
Thank you, Your Worship. First item is 2.1, minutes of June 10, 2024.
Minutes of June 10. Councillor Sullivan and Councillor Harris on the question. All in favour? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, City Clerk.
Next is 2.2, approval of minutes of June 17.
June 17, minutes. Councillor Sullivan and Councillor Radwan on the question. All in favour? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, City Clerk.
Next is the approval of the agenda, plus one addition, item 17.1, from Committee of the Whole, which is recommendations for appointments to committees.
Okay, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda. Deputy and Councillor Hickey on the question. All in favour? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item?
Next is disclosures of conflict of interest, if we have any.
Not seeing any. Next item?
Next is the consent agenda.
Over to you, Deputy, for the consent.
Thank you, Your Worship. Your Worship, I would move 5.1 through to 5.9, but I'd like to have an update on 5.5 to let the public know what's going on with that project, please.
Okay, no problem. Take a second on that. Councillor Sullivan? Okay, I've got a couple of questions. So, we'll do 5.5 first?
Sure.
Okay, since you brought it up.
Good evening, Your Worship and councillors. So, the development at 99 King Street, I'm very excited to say that the development is moving forward. The developer began erecting fencing along South Market last week, all permitted. This week, the fencing will continue along King Street. The city has issued street occupancy permits for the development and will be issuing street excavation permits later this week. In the coming weeks, the developer will remove the existing foundation walls and prepare the site for construction. We are coordinating closely with the developer to ensure that the project progresses smoothly with minimal impact on the surrounding areas. Graphics of historical buildings will be added to the plywood fencing along King Street, enhancing the visual appeal during construction. And we appreciate the community's patience and cooperation as we work towards completing this important development.
Good news. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
All right, councillor Lowe, over to you.
I would like to chat about 5.7.
5.7? Mike Baker, oh yeah, he's here this evening.
5.7 is the closing of Charlotte Street and Union to actually Princess because King Square South to Princess is now dug up. So, what we're talking about is closing the street, probably one of the main streets, if not the main street in the city. The public hearing for the people to come was on the 13th. The tender closed on the 12th, the day before, and I believe this was written up on the 19th, if I read it correctly. So, what I'm saying is, the confusion it's going to cause for the commercial part, for the residents, is unbelievable. And what I don't understand, or I'd like to ask Mike, is that two shifts, possibly? We know now, if this passes, we know the low tender. And I'm asking, could we go back and negotiate for two shifts? Can we negotiate to work on Saturday? And I know there's a right of the engineer now to appoint Saturday work if the engineer, I believe, feels it's not moving fast enough. And I believe this morning, or yesterday, Garden Street shut off, from the bottom of garden, right to the very top. So, to find your way around the city is difficult. And I know all this work got to be done. I understand all that. But we should be making it as easy as we can for the public that's driving, and for the public that's walking. And not everybody actually walks. There's wheelchairs, there's scooters, there's all kinds. So, all I'm asking you, could we have discussion with, if the low tender gets the contract, normally it does, and we can read who the low tender is, could we talk about Saturday work? Could we talk about working a little longer, other than four or five o'clock on a sunny day? The sun goes down at nine o'clock. And what I'm getting at is, we should make every effort, and we will have to pay for council, city, it's got to come out of, you know, I don't expect the low tender to pay overtime rates or anything. But it's so important to the public that I think we should go back and try to negotiate longer hours and to finish it. If this project is finished, I believe it's a four-month project?
That's correct, roughly.
So, if this is finished in three months, is there a gift that the low tender gets for that? And is there a penalty if it goes beyond what you want it done in?
Through Your Worship to the councillor?
Ten questions.
There's a few questions there, so I'll try and answer all of them for you. Right now, on this project, there is no bonus penalty clause on this particular project. So if they do finish early, there is no bonus for them to, I'm actually finishing early on this. Finishing late, there is our regular liquidated damages past the substantial completion date that we can use. So that's standard with all of our projects. In terms of, we don't necessarily know that Galbraith Construction has two crews right now. Right now, all we know is that they're the low bidder, so we don't have a schedule from them. We don't know that if they're going to have multiple crews working on this at one time. So, we'll know more once we do get the schedule from them. And once we know that, we can work from there. The typical contractors work seven to seven, is a typical timeframe for those contractors. Another thing on this particular street, it is somewhat broken up into two sections. So there's actually one section, Union to Queen Square North, sorry, King Square North, that's the storm sewer. And then there's another section on King Square South that goes to King. So arguably, you'd be able to keep King Street open if they just had one crew working on it one time, and then close that whenever they jump to that section. So there are some benefits of only having one crew, but...
And I agree with everything you're saying. Bottom line is what I'm saying. It might cost the city some more money, but I think we should make every effort we can with, if Galbraith is the bidder on this here, which is a low tender, to do something to make it better for the public and for the businesses that exist along the street. I know the thing about the lights, I mean, we're buying the lights ourselves, it can mean way over tender, rightly can mean, and I understand that. But I think we should make every effort we can to speed things along on that main street. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you, councillor. That's, thank you, Mike. I'll just add to that, that in the kit, the low bid is just over $3 million, and 26.6% of that is the city's share. And that's why you're seeing so much work being done, is because there's some real opportunities there, because other levels of government are paying for the lion's share of it. So that's why you'll see so many streets torn up in St. John. It's good news. All right, councillor Radwan, over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. I have questions on 5.7 as well, but also 5.6. So, I mean, I'm excited that this is getting done. I did go to the open house, and I just want to tell you, Mike, that the staff were fantastic dealing with the public. They were just wonderful. My question, though, is, what sort of expectations is going to be put onto the contractor to make sure that there is accessibility at all times going into the businesses? And is there any expectation for signage to make sure that people know where to go to the businesses that are open? Because Charlotte Street on the other side, you can't get a wheelchair through there. I was shocked when I walked by the other day, and I took a screenshot of it, and I was so surprised. There's no way you could get a walker through there, you couldn't get a stroller through there, you certainly couldn't get a wheelchair through there. So how do we make sure that these businesses are going to be completely accessible to everybody?
Actually, through Your Worship to the councillor, we are, for this job, it is just a pipe, a storm sewer job, so it's only one pipe as opposed to three pipes, which all the other jobs like Waterloo Street, Pitt Street, Garden Street have been. So, the expectation is that they would actually be installing those first, that main line pipe. They aren't putting services into each property line like they were on those other streets. So, the hope is that we're actually able to keep our sidewalks longer in that situation. And where they are removed, it is standard practice, and I did reach out to Fredericton and Moncton, and they do this as well, of using basically gravel in those situations. The unfortunate thing, in some spots where you're putting in a new sidewalk, you can't, when you're putting in that sidewalk there, you're forming it up, and you're pouring the concrete, you can't have accessibility to that entrance during that time. But we can try and plan around that. So we can try, and if they have an alternate entrance that they can use. And those are the things that we, we'll have a full-time inspector on site, and we're doing, I think, meetings every two weeks with the business owners to try and coordinate that stuff so that we can try and work around their schedules as much as possible. I know there was ways that we did certain things on Waterloo Street, but on actual Waterloo Street, we had big holes because all the services went to those properties, and it was unavoidable for us to be able to not dig in front of those businesses.
So, my gravel actually doesn't work, and I don't know if councillor Lowe and Hickey know, but you have people in wheelchairs. I happen to be part of a conversation, there's people in wheelchairs that live in apartments in that section. So I'm more worried than I normally would, because they have to access it, they can't go around, they have to get in there.
There is a property, I believe, at the corner of North Market and Charlotte Street. And one of the things that our project engineers look into is, we believe there's a back entrance that allows accessibility through the back. We would, so maybe there's a way around that for that particular property. It is something that the project engineer is working on right now and trying to find ways of working with the, everybody basically within that has, lives there, or is businesses...
Yeah, we still need the general public to be able to go through there. I know that one suggestion was made, that in some of the bigger municipalities, they have metal slabs that they put out that wheelchairs or strollers or whatever can go on much more easily. I don't know if that's something we can access, and I don't know, Mayor, if you want, I can come around for my second question.
As I say, I reached out to Fredericton and Moncton, and the only thing that I found out was in Moncton, during much longer, year-long projects, they put temporary asphalt down, but that's if it's going through the wintertime. That's not for a three-to-four-month-year project, or month project. So, I actually haven't run into anywhere where we've put planks down through a full section to be able to have accessibility all the way through construction. It is a disruptive, like we do have to dig up the area. And we would ask everybody to, if they can, to, you know, if they need to go to the market, maybe they can take an alternate route to get, and they're not coming off of, through the main drag where there's a lot of excavation going on. But they can, but if they can go around, then that would also be beneficial for us.
I know what you're saying, but, I mean, for somebody like myself, I don't mind walking extra, but it can be really hard for somebody with a cane or something. So, I'll leave that for now, but I'll come back around if I can.
Okay. I think it's fair to say, Mike, that your team has historically been very good with access, because, I mean, this is the most dense portion of the city, is the uptown area. And I have seen them put ramps out of wood or whatever to try to make sure people have access. I know they do everything they can to try to, you know, have the access for people. And I know you'll get this figured out somehow or the other, because I've seen it over time. So I do have good faith. But I think councillor Hickey also has a question for you, and he's up next. Hickey, over to you.
Maybe. Thank you, Your Worship. Similar question to your point, but I guess I'd start with, when's King Square South, on Charlotte, King Square South to Princess, when's that done?
It's the same contractor that's doing the work. I'm not exactly sure when it's going to be done. I think that they're going to jump from that project on to the King Square South to Union Street project once they're completed.
Okay, so they won't be closed at the same time?
I think that that's the plan. However, those are things that we'll know more once I get the schedule from the contractor.
Is it something that we can control, once that happens, Mike? Like, once we get their schedules?
We potentially can control a little bit of their work, but we also leave it open to the contractor, because if we control too much, then you're also paying a lot more money.
Yeah, of course.
For the work. So we try and allow them to, basically, within reason, control their own schedule.
Okay. I think, to the mayor's point, you know, you're talking about, I would say, one of the most densely populated blocks in the city between the apartment buildings that are there and the businesses that are there. You think on Waterloo Street, I think we fell a little short on business notification, because I know a lot of the businesses didn't know what was happening as things changed day to day. And that's where we were actually directly changing access to the buildings. I think the contractor did a great job on that project, but if there's an opportunity to fill the gap better on notification, whether it's on them or on us, I think we need to take it, because you've got a really, really high concentration of businesses along there. The one thing I'd ask, too, which is, in our reconstruction of the street, we're transforming the look of that block, right? I mean, it's really going to change, I think, quite substantially and quite positively. Can we get some renderings of that so that we can better sell to the community of just how positive this is going to be and what this is going to look like moving forward?
I don't have renderings at this time. It's something I can look into to see if I can get renderings on it. We have top views, but it's really not the best.
It'd be great if that could be something that we make standard practice on these reconstructions, just so that we can turn around and say, look, I understand that there's a massive hurdle here in construction times, but look at the outcome that's going to be, and it's going to be positive.
We're going to be adding that to, not all the reconstructions, because some of them are fairly standard, but some of the ones that are changing quite a bit, that's going to be added to the scope of work fairly early on, so that at least we have a rendering that we can show people what that's going to look like.
Okay, thanks very much.
Councillor Radwan, back to you.
Thank you, Mayor. So with 5.6, help me understand, do we have any sort of policy? There wasn't a lot of detail in there on why we would be choosing an American company over a St. John business.
Sorry. Kevin, Kevin Lockery, is he here tonight? Oh, he's online tonight. Okay. Kevin's going to answer that.
Through You, Your Worship, to the councillor, it's not an American company, it's actually a company based in Ontario, Viking Chavez, and we've used them previously for some of our other equipment. They were the proponent that won, and they're a Canadian company.
Normally, don't you usually put what the two tenders were? I didn't get details. Was it really far off? I'm having a hard time to be in favour of this one, Kevin, but I'd like to support you.
Okay, no. Through You, Your Worship, to the councillor. So this went through the regular RFP process that we normally do with all of our vehicles. And in this case, the proponent out of Ontario, based on the different qualifications that we do with our RFP process, the company from Ontario was the one that won in this case. As I said, we've used them in the past. We've purchased our roll-on-roll-off trucks from them, they're tested and tried. With that being said, they work with a company out of Fredericton, Saunders Equipment Limited. So in the past, you would have seen Saunders bid for these trucks, but in this case, the actual manufacturer bid as opposed to the contracted vendor that they normally go through.
Are you able to tell me how much difference it was? Don't we usually put that in the package? No? No?
We usually don't put that in the package.
Okay, because the other one was there for Galbraith, so I wasn't sure.
So the other one was applied pressure.
Okay, okay, no, that's good. Yeah, I'm having a hard time with this one.
Councillor, do you want us to just pull that one? We can pull 5.6 out, we can do it at the end? Is that what we can do?
Let's correct, Your Worship. We become 14.1.
Okay, so that'll go to 14.1. So, we're going to, so now, do I have to correct the mover and the seconder on that?
Right, so the mover and seconder would have to remove the motion to, and with the removal of 5.6.
Okay. Deputy, over to you.
Thank you, Your Worship. So I would move 5.1 through to 5.5, and 5.7 to 5.9.
Thank you. Councillor Hickey, you good with that? You're the seconder on that? Okay. Got a motion on the floor for those items, except for 5.6 on the question? All in favour? Opposed? Motion carried. Excellent. Next item, City Clerk.
Mayor, it's now 6:30, so we have advertised our public hearings to begin at 6:30. So I'd suggest we move to item 9.1, which is the first of the two public hearings for a proposed zoning bylaw amendment with staff presentation and planning advisory committee report for 2400 Westfield Road.
I'm sending this one over to the Commissioner of Growth for the introduction.
Thank you, Your Worship. Good evening, Your Worship and members of council. Before you, this evening for a public hearing is an application for a rezoning and Section 59 amendment submitted by Janice and Richard Hunt for the property located at 2400 Westfield Road. The application is seeking to rezone the site and rescind the Section 59 conditions imposed on the 2016 rezoning, which will allow the property to be converted into a dwelling. The application has been evaluated by staff and the planning advisory committee, and included in your package is the recommendation to rezone the property and rescind the Section 59 conditions. I'll now turn it over to Yeva Matson, the planner, on the file for the staff presentation.
Thank you.
There we go. Sorry about that. So as said, this is a rezoning and a Section 59 rescinding for a 2004 rezoned site. So this is 2400 Westfield Road, and it used to be a church. It was rezoned in 2004 to allow for a cabinetry shop, showroom and associated dwelling. At this time, the Section 59 conditions were placed upon it, limiting it to that exact proposal and the associated uses. The new owners would like to rezone it and remove those conditions so that they can convert the entire existing building into a dwelling unit. So this site, as said, is located along Westfield Road, right at the corner of Belmont, and this is an area that's largely zoned rural settlement residential. In the image on the screen, you can see this existing building. There's no proposed changes to the exterior beyond the removing of some signage. The building typology is already residential in nature. And here's another image looking north along Westfield Road, and then an image looking south, and you can see in this image kind of the surrounding low-density residential neighbourhood type. As said, this site is designated as rural settlement in the municipal plan, which promotes low-density residential, as long as it fits the character of the community, and the proposed redevelopment of a commercial use to residential is in alignment with the municipal plan. The current zoning is ruled general commercial, and the proposal would be to rezone to rural settlement residential, which would be compatible with the surrounding development pattern and would allow for it to be purely residential in nature again. Engagement letters were sent to all landowners within 100 metres of the subject's property on May 6. Public notice was posted on May 16, and there was one letter received in support. So PAC and staff are in alignment, and they recommend rezoning the site to rural settlement residential and removing those Section 59 conditions as it conforms to the municipal plan and the zoning bylaw. Thank you.
Thank you, Yeva. I'll then, I'll open the public hearing. Questions for staff will be right after the public hearing. So I'll ask if there's anyone here who would like to speak against this application. I have to ask three times, so I'll ask again if there's anyone here who would like to speak against the application for 2400. And I'll ask for the third time if there's anyone here who would like to speak against the application. Okay, hearing no one? I'll ask if there's anyone here who would like to speak in favour of the application. I'll ask you to come forward and just give us your name, and, come on up then, Richard? I've read about you in this kit here tonight.
We've closed on it on June 1, and our intention is to convert the workshop space into additional dwelling as soon as we can.
Okay, sounds good. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Hunt? We saw the application in the kit. Perfect. Well, thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll ask again if there's anyone here who would like to speak in favour of the application? And I'll ask for the third time if there's anyone here who would like to speak in favour of the application. All right? So I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'll ask my team if anyone has any questions for staff. Councillor Hickey, or, sorry, councillor Harris, over to you.
You were technically the first councillor. Anyway, this is a question for Commissioner Pofinoff, more than it's probably for you, Yeva, on this story. Commissioner, I know with our Housing Accelerator Fund, we envisioned a bit of a reframe around some of our bureaucratic processes, not to call it the derogatory red tape that everybody likes to call it. But tell me again, would a proposal... likes to call it. But tell me again, would a proposal like this sort of fall into those more accessible processes? Because I know, like, a rezoning process costs the applicant money. This is an obvious, you know, I, I don't want to call it a waste of time, but it's just such an obvious, um, proposal. There has to be a way, uh, for this to kind of be fast-tracked and have that reduced price tag. Um, and I know of a number of other instances around the city where people are kind of stuck with a situation and, and, you know, they're considering options, but they don't want to pay the X amount of dollars that it is to go through the time and the money for the rezoning. So can you just explain some of that to me on this and how this one specifically might fit?
Through, through your worship to Counselor Harris, that's a great question. I mean, some of the initiatives that we have planned under the Housing Accelerator is definitely, and I don't mind using the term, to reduce red tape, to make things easier for people to, um, you know, increase the number of units on their lot, or to generally have a more dense community here. Um, some of the things we're looking at, as you know, is around upzoning properties so that they, somebody who wants to put a basement apartment in or something doesn't have to go through the rezoning process. Um, this case is a little different where there's existing Section 59 conditions on the property, and in order for them to, as it is today, proceed with their project, that they had to go through this process. Now, whether they would have to do this process in the future, I would have to look into that because this is a, is quite a specific case where there's these past conditions on, which, which make it more difficult for, for the people who want to just convert this to a single unit. So leave that one with me. I'll get back to you on that. But certainly reducing red tape is, uh, part of the name of the game of where we're headed.
Sounds good. Counselor Hickey, over to you.
Uh, thanks, your worship. Similar question, like, I, I guess, my thought is if, why, why wouldn't we enable people just to be able to apply to have Section 59s removed, like, and revert back to original zoning? Like, why, how much you guys spend on this? Two grand? Yeah. So like, like, why not, why not be, why not allow them to be able to then just automatically revert back to the, to the original zoning instead of having to apply again on a property we've already had an application for and said you can move outside the zone instead of just enabling them to go back to their original zone?
Okay, over to you or to Ava?
Real quickly, through your worship, Yeva's going to help me out on this one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Over to you.
Um, so it actually is something planning has talked about, is removing those old Section 59 conditions, considering we have quite a few of them that are very outdated, no longer applicable legally. Um, for example, we saw one that said, uh, use is only allowed in Section 520 of the zoning bylaw. That zoning bylaw doesn't exist anymore. So why is it a condition? And it does have to be removed before it can be done. Um, I think the, the stalling point here is there's still many of them, and planning doesn't know where to begin to remove them. Because we would have to bring every single one before council.
No, I guess my question isn't so much removing arbitrary ones, but more when someone's coming in to say, we want to do this with this house. It was originally a house, or it was, or its original zoning is good for us. We don't want the Section 59s for a cabinet shop that were there previously. Why can't staff just go, yeah, remove it, instead of it having to come here? Because, because that's the original zoning we said it was good for.
Right. So she's going to answer that.
Through worship to your councillor, um, so unfortunately, the Section 59s fall under the Community Planning Act, so it's legislated by province that it does have to come before council. So it can't just be signed off by staff, which is why we were kind of talking about doing the big swaths of old, old ones, right?
We come again to the Great Gate somewhere around the Petersville Hill. Thank you.
All right, Counselor Ogden, over to you.
In the last three weeks, I've run into five seniors living in double-story buildings by themselves, widowed most of them, and the apartment upstairs is empty. And I've said to them, look, you're barely getting by with the money that you have. You could rent out that other space. They don't seem to understand that at all. And, um, but we, we just keep coming across them when we're painting somebody's place. And I think of, like, this example, making these people pay $2,000 is ridiculous, but I think about George Street Anglican Church, which is, I don't know what's in there now, but there's probably lots of room there for apartments and everything. What can we do to encourage more people to know that they can take their space and make money from it? It would certainly help a lot of seniors, but like, when you look at, uh, George Street Anglican Church, West St. John, it, uh, it's sort of the beacon of that whole area, and it's surrounded by empty trucks and, um, probably three different colors, and there's not much activity there. How can we encourage people to have apartments? We do have a housing crisis.
Commissioner?
Yes, thank you. Um, through your worship to Counselor Ogden, I mean, that's a great question. Through our Housing Accelerator application or initiatives, uh, we will be doing, you know, communication and engagement. We, there will be a lot of information out how we're trying to make it easier for people to convert existing buildings into dwelling units, build new dwelling units, et cetera. So we are working on a thorough communications and engagement plan around that, and that, I think, will help get the word out that there are things that you can do with your buildings, that we are making it easier for you to convert existing buildings into residential units, and, and, um, that we're here, open for business and open for people to convert. So I'm hoping that we're going to, um, get a, you know, get in contact or get the attention of, of existing property owners. We also have things like the developer notification list. Um, that is, you know, trying to get people who are, um, have properties that they would like to unload, connect them with people who want to purchase and convert, so that we do have a number of initiatives and more to come.
Thank you. Okay. City clerk, over to you for the motions.
Uh, in this case, just two motions, uh, approve first reading by title and approve second reading by title.
Approve first reading by title. Deputy and Counselor Hickey on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John.
Approved. Second reading by title. Counselor Lowe and Counselor Stewart on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John.
Excellent. Thank you very much. You're almost on your way. Next item, city clerk.
Uh, next is item 9.2. It's the second of our public hearings tonight, and it's for a proposed zoning bylaw amendment with a staff presentation and planning advisory committee report for 15 O'Brien Street.
Sending this over to the commissioner for the introduction, please.
Thank you, your worship and members of council. This evening's second public hearing is for an application for a rezoning and Section 59 amendment submitted by, uh, Jordan Van Thiel for the property located at 15 O'Brien Street. The application is seeking to rezone the site and rescind the Section 59 conditions imposed on the 2022 rezoning, which will allow the property to continue to be used as a two-unit dwelling as opposed to its current status as a legal non-conforming use. The application has been evaluated by staff and the planning advisory committee, and included in your package is the recommendation to rezone the property and rescind the Section 59 conditions. I'll now turn it over to Thomas Luallan, the planner, uh, for the staff presentation on the file.
Thank you. Uh, as mentioned, the applicant is seeking to rezone the property from general commercial to two-unit residential, as well as remove the existing Section 59 conditions that were tied to a development proposal that incorporated the adjacent property at 730 Wilson Street, but never materialized. The property was recently sold to a family who intends again to live in it in the existing house. Subject site, uh, again, currently houses a two-unit home that was originally constructed about 1985. Uh, the subject site is on the west side, situated between Fairville Boulevard and Manawagannish Road, being located squarely between Manawagannish Road and Fairville. Uh, it is on the dividing line between commercial activity and residential neighborhood. Subject site and the residential aspects of the neighborhood are designated stable residential, given the existing building, um, is a two-unit home and that there are no intentions to have redevelopment. The subject site does align the stable residential designation. Again, the subject site's currently zoned general commercial, and while the residential aspects of the neighborhood are predominantly, uh, one-unit and two-unit residential, the broader commercial lands to the south are zoned general commercial and regional commercial. The original zoning of the property was two-unit residential and was rezoned to general commercial on September 26, 2022, uh, to facilitate the larger development, uh, that did not materialize. Uh, seeing as a proposed development is no longer possible, the applicant is seeking to revert the property to its original R2 zoning. Letters were sent to landowners within 100 meters of the subject property on May 6th, and public notice was posted on May 21st, and as of this presentation, there were no letters. PAC and staff are recommending their approval of the, uh, rezoning to the two-unit residential and the removing of the existing Section 59 conditions.
Okay, thank you. So I will open the public hearing, and I'll ask if there is anyone here who would like to speak against this application. I'll ask again if there's anyone here who would like to speak against 15 O'Brien Street application. And I'll ask for the third time if there's anyone here who would like to speak against the application. Okay, I'll ask if there's anyone here who would like to speak in favor of 15 O'Brien Street. I'll ask again if there's, uh, anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the application for 15 O'Brien Street. And I'll ask for the third time if there's anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the application. Okay, so hearing no one, I will close the public hearing, and I'll ask the team if you have any questions for staff. And seeing none, I'll ask the clerk for the motion. Oh, sorry. Counselor Redmond?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with everything, but I just, I keep looking at this large parcel of land on this property, and I just keep thinking, like, do we have any conversations usually at the staff level of, you know, is there any sort of expansion that you might consider in the future? Or I, I'm even, I look at it and I see, like, two other whole dwellings could go there, but that's just me and my vision. I, I mean, obviously, if they're coming to you and they need this, then you're doing good customer service by giving people what they need, but is there any opportunity to do anything like that?
Um, in this instance, no. Uh, so it's actually the previous property owner that had filed the application and not the family itself. Um, so there is a bit of a distance between the communication, uh, as well. It may be challenging in this location just because of topography. Um, but, uh, the owner of 730 Wilson is working on plans to bring forward a project of similar capacity to the one that incorporated both properties.
Okay.
Um, we're just not at any phase to say anything. Um, but there is intensification, maybe not just this exact property.
Yeah, well, I mean, I, I hope that the public's kind of looking at this because we are in a housing crisis. We, um, you know, we can't change everything, but I think we're fairly open to reasonable things. So thank you for your work.
Thank you. Counselor Harris?
This is just a, it's more of a quick comment. Thank you. Thank you, clerk. Uh, yeah, your worship, this is more of a quick comment. This, uh, to my colleagues around the table as well as anybody who's watching. Two years ago, um, we did pass a motion around this table to stand up a municipal housing entity, and this is a perfect moment for one of those, if they existed and if they were up and running, to intervene in a situation like this. There are so many new opportunities around funding for a nonprofit kind of, um, continuum project here, uh, that can get creative in lots like this. There's just nobody quarterbacking it. Um, so this is just a little poke, a little friendly reminder that if we had one, there would be a team that would wake up every morning and have this as their mandate to find opportunities like this, to bring synergy and to bring funding to solve the housing crisis. That's all I'll say.
Thank you, councillor. Okay, that's it for questions. So, uh, I have, uh, over to you, city clerk, for the motions.
Thank you, your worship. So two motions, again, required for this one. Approval of first and second reading by title.
Approve first reading by title. Counselor Sullivan and the deputy on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John.
And I'll take a motion to approve second reading by title. Counselor Sullivan and Counselor Lowe on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John.
All right. City clerk, where are we going next on this map?
Uh, well, we did skip a couple items, so next we're back to members' comments.
Members' comments. Counselor Sullivan, you are up first.
Thanks, your worship. It's June, which means it's budget season for next January. Um, but really importantly, we, we announced a couple of weeks ago that we had opened Shape Your Budget online, and hopefully residents have had an opportunity to get in and have a look at that. If not, please visit stjohn.ca and have a look at Shape Your Budget in, in Shape Your City. But on top of that, um, we are having two public sessions here in chambers. We would like to invite anybody who wants to come in, uh, and they are on July 10th from 11:30 to 1:00 p.m., so that's a Wednesday, and July 16th, that's a Monday evening from 4:30 until 6:00 p.m. here at City Hall Council Chambers. Uh, for more information on Shape Your Budget or to remind yourself when these are when you forget, you can have a look at the Shape Your Budget page on stjohn.ca.
Thank you. Uh, deputy?
Thank you, your worship. Uh, so your worship, uh, the city of St. John is partnering with Area 506 to host the third Annual Canada Day Waterfront Festival. There will be, uh, all kinds of activities, uh, for Canada Day, uh, for people to enjoy, and the gates for the Container Village will open at 11:00 a.m. and activities start at noon hour. Everybody's encouraged to gather near the main stage at 1 o'clock for official remarks by our mayor and, uh, the kickoff of the opening ceremony. Happy Canada Day. The other thing I just want to mention briefly is I, uh, spent a couple of days with, uh, mayors from, uh, and deputy mayors, a lot of deputy mayors, from, uh, across the Atlantic Canada area, and, uh, we met with, uh, ministers of housing from PEINB in Newfoundland. Unfortunately, Nova Scotia couldn't show up, as well as the federal minister, Sean Fraser. And we talked about everything from, uh, increasing insurance costs because of, uh, climate change to, uh, you guessed it, the top one was housing. So, uh, it's nice to know that we're all working in the same direction on the same issues. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, deputy. Uh, Counselor Redmond?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, on June 27th, the Multicultural Newcomers Centre is going to be hosting a free event. It's Multicultural Day celebrations, and they're holding it from 5:30 until 7:30 at night in the Market Square atrium. Um, I just wanted to thank everybody who organized the first multicultural Eid Bazaar. That was actually really, really well-attended over, uh, on the west side, um, at the Dennis Morris Community Centre. It was great. And also a big thank you to everybody who hosted the Hearts for Humanity, um, where they had a bunch of information about the war in Gaza, and, uh, Dr. G was there, who is a, who's a physician that went there from Canada, and he had a whole lot of interesting things to tell us and, uh, confirming a lot of reports and, uh, talking about how unsafe it is for physicians there. So, um, I, my, my thoughts and prayers are, are with everybody who's, uh, worried about family members in, uh, the whole Middle East there. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Counselor Hickey?
Uh, thanks very much, your worship. Friday, the 21st, I just wanted to recognize, um, that it was Indigenous Peoples' Day, and we, the, I was particularly impressed this year with, um, the events that were held and how respectfully they were acknowledged, uh, how celebratory they were, and how, uh, well-attended they were. Um, and I know a lot of that organization was led by city staff, um, so I want to thank them for that.
Thank you, councillor. It was, it was a great event. Uh, Counselor Kellen?
Thanks, your worship. I just wanted to shout out to St. John Transit for this, uh, little drop here on our desks today because when I first started, my very first motion was about trying to get the hours up again. And on here, it says in 2024, we are on track to provide over 101,000 service hours of St. John Transit. It's like, it feels like night and day from 2021 and the build back from COVID, and I think people are really loving, I know they're loving the flex service on the west side. I love to see those flex buses over on the east side now, and I think that's just going to keep expanding, and we're so innovative and have come so far, and I just am so happy. So, congrats to St. John Transit for, you know, hitting a ton of goals and just continuing to grow and keep riding the bus, people. Have a good one.
Those are great numbers. There, we haven't had 101, you know, thousand service hours in a long, long time, so that is good. I had an opportunity to actually present this at FCM, and I had five minutes, and that was well-received, and this was part of the handouts that I gave out. So people were very impressed with the flex system as well. So thanks for bringing that forward. Counselor Norton?
Uh, thank you, your worship. Go Oilers, go! And thanks for, Captain, for wearing those colors. Uh,
colors. A couple of quick things. Canada Day events, they're out, they're on our website, and you don't need to plan. We've done it for you. So come out on Canada Day. It's all there, from the boardwalk, Area 506, to enjoying the, all the festivities in uptown St. John. And I know some other destinations will also have lots to offer, as well as you, your family and friends make your way around the city on that particular day. Also, leisure services, our recreation department, Lynn Kane, the Sunshine Program is up and running. There's lots of expensive things that kids can do, your learners can do. And there's also some absolutely wonderful things that your learners, your children can do while they're home for the summer that are free of charge, that are offered by your municipality. One of them is Sunshine Program, where trained staff are there to keep them engaged, keep them safe, keep them healthy and happy while parents are off to work. So as dollars are stretched thin, avail yourself of some of those opportunities that our municipality is offering in terms of programming for our most, for our vulnerable and our most treasured. So take a look at them, and the sites are pretty convenient and some pretty good schools. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I've just got a couple of things. Donald Sutherland, he was born in St. John. I believe he lived here until he was in his, just through his junior high years. This is where he began his legacy and his passing ways on the city of St. John. We've had a lot of calls and interest of like, what are you going to do now that Donald Sutherland's passed? How do we, will we recognize that? So from his starring in The Dirty Dozen, the movie MASH, to the president in the Hunger Games series, his remarkable talent was on full display, captivating audiences worldwide. His portraits can be seen, actually, if you walk along Charlotte Street before the whole, it's torn up, on the, let's see, north, south, the east side of the building that used to be the, here I am talking like a St. Johner. That used to be, that used to be the, no, aren't they on the, yeah, well, the fire station was there years ago. And so they're on that wall, so you can see them. And that's between Union Street and the market. Members of the public, so what we've done is we've gotten a book of condolences, and members of the public are invited to come to City Hall between the hours of 8 and, what are we, open till 8:30 and 6:00 p.m.? And you can sign the book of condolences until 4th of July. And then we thought we might place it up at the market, because people might have some interesting memories of Donald Sutherland that maybe others could share. So if you'd like to do that, please feel free to drop by City Hall. And then this week, we also lost Jim Irving, James K. Irving. So on behalf of the St. John City Council and the city of St. John, I want to extend our sincere condolences to the family of James Irving, who passed away on Friday. He was seven, he had a 76-year career. He was 96 when he died, and it began with log driving on the St. John River. I took a little bit of information out of his formal obituary. He was a leader in the business community, and business operations grew and diversified under his leadership. So they were also, they were into forest products, shipbuilding, and industrial fabrication, transportation and logistics, retail and distribution, agriculture, construction and equipment. And he built a team, and he employed over 20,000 people in Canada and the U.S. Those, the other thing, though, that he was big with was his partnership with, was the PALS partnership, and it was Partners Assisting Local Schools. And he was the founder, and that ended up growing into over 30 schools and 150 partners. And I think that's probably the thing that's always been, impressed me the most about him is that he had that, in 2000, he started that, and he had that continuing commitment to providing opportunities to kids in neighborhoods that wouldn't have a lot of opportunities that money buys. And so those things, he might provide instruments, he might provide, you know, scholarships. And we did know students who benefited from that program. It was a great program. So to his family, we want to send our condolences. And I know he has four children, Jim, who I know, and I've met Judith, and there's also Robert, who I believe lives in Moncton, and Mary Gina, who I don't know. But to all of them, we send our condolences on behalf of the city. Thank you. And that's it for me, City Clerk. Next item.
Thank you, your worship. So next on the agenda is a proclamation, item 7.1, and this is for Indigenous Survivors' Day, June 30.
Whereas the city of St. John acknowledges the enduring historical injustices faced by Indigenous peoples rooted in colonization, forced assimilation, and systemic injustices. And whereas the designation of June 30 as Indigenous Survivors' Day provides a significant opportunity to recognize and honor the resilience, strength, and cultural heritage of Indigenous communities that have endured historical traumas, including the 60s scoop, the Millennium Scoop, birth alerts, and the enduring legacy of residential schools. And whereas by establishing June 30 as Indigenous Survivors' Day, the city of St. John aims to create a crucial platform for healing, education, and dialogue. This initiative seeks to raise awareness about the unique struggles faced by Indigenous peoples, emphasizing the need for understanding and support. And whereas this observance serves as a solemn reminder of the ongoing challenges confronted by Indigenous peoples in communities. And whereas through the implementation of Indigenous Survivors' Day on June 30, 2024, the city of St. John reaffirms its dedication to honoring the Indigenous survivors, promoting healing, and actively contributing to the construction of a more equitable and inclusive city for all. Now therefore, I, Mayor Donna Nodreerden of St. John, do hereby proclaim June 30, 2024, as Indigenous Survivors' Day in the city of St. John. Okay, next item, City Clerk.
Thank you, your worship. So next are the consideration of bylaws. And I wanted to point out that there were three members of council that were absent for these public hearings, so it would be appropriate to withdraw for this. And those are the mayor, the deputy mayor, and Counselor Harris. And so in this case, council would have to appoint a member to act as chair during the withdrawal of those three members. So there are four separate items that require approval that it would be appropriate for those three members to withdraw from.
Amy Poffenroth, your lights on? Is that great?
Sorry, I was just waiting for my turn.
Oh, okay. So does, well, Counselor Sullivan sat in the chair the last time, so is, do we need a motion to get him?
A motion to appoint him for this item.
Okay, I got a motion for, a mover and a seconder on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. All right. So I will.
City Clerk, want to call the next one?
Thank you, Chair. So next is item 10.1. This is a municipal plan amendment at 901 Foster Thurston Drive.
Are we going to staff or just going to the vote? Going to Commissioner Poffenroth.
Thank you. I guess I jumped the gun earlier. Thank you, your worship and members of council. Before you this evening for third reading is a municipal plan amendment that was submitted by 647102 NB LTD for the property located at 901 Foster Thurston Drive. The application seeks to include the site within the primary development area, which will allow the property to connect to existing municipal water and sewer services. The application received first and second reading on June 10 following the required public hearing, and I can confirm that all legislative requirements of the Community Planning Act have been met. And the item is now before you to move forward with third reading.
City Clerk, motions?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, in this case, two motions are required to approve third reading in its entirety and then to approve third reading by title.
Looking for a motion for third reading entirety, Counselor Redmond, Counselor Killen on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye, raising a hand. Contrary-minded? Carry.
Allow to amend the municipal plan bylaw. The municipal plan bylaw of the city of St. John enacted on the 30th day of January 2012 is amended by one amending Schedule A city structure by redesignating a parcel of land with an area of approximately 7.93 hectares located at 901 Foster Thurston Drive, also identified as PID 55242945, from park and natural area outside of the primary development area to park and natural area within the primary development area classification. Number two, amending Schedule B future land use by redesignating a parcel of land with an area of approximately 7.93 hectares located at 901 Foster Thurston Drive, also identified as PID 55242945, from park and natural area outside of the primary development area to park and natural area within the primary development area.
Looking for a motion for third reading by title. Counselors Lowe and Stewart on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye, raising a hand. Contrary-minded? Carry.
Allow to amend the municipal plan bylaw.
City Clerk?
Thank you. And next is another bylaw reading, and it's item 10.2 on your agenda. And this is for a zoning bylaw amendment with Section 59 conditions for 435 Woodward Avenue.
And for that, we're going back to Commissioner Poffenroth.
Thank you, your worship. The next third reading before common council for rezoning that was submitted by Housing New Brunswick for the property located at 435 Woodward Avenue. The rezoning will permit the development of two 10-unit affordable residential buildings. The application received first and second reading on June 10 following the required public hearing, and I can now confirm that all legislative requirements of the Community Planning Act have been met. And the item is before you to move forward with third reading.
Thank you, Commissioner. City Clerk, motions?
Three motions in this case. Approve third reading entirety, approve Section 59, and approve third reading by title.
So looking for a motion for third reading in its entirety. Counselors Hickey and Killen on the question. All in favor signify aye, raise your hand. Contrary-minded? Carry.
Allow to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John. The zoning bylaw of the city of St. John enacted on the 15th day of December 2014 is amended by amending Schedule A the zoning map of the city of St. John by rezoning a parcel, a piece of land having an area of approximately 8,988 square meters located at 435 Woodward Avenue, also identified as PID 00049916, from neighborhood community facility to mid-rise residential pursuant to a resolution adopted by common council under Section 59 of the Community Planning Act.
Motion for Section 59 conditions. Counselor Norton, Counselor Stewart on the question. All in favor signify aye, raise your hands. Contrary-minded? Carry. And a motion for bylaw by title. Counselor Stewart, Counselor Lowe on the question. All in favor, aye. Contrary-minded? Carry.
Allow to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John.
10.3, City Clerk?
10.3 is a zoning bylaw amendment with Section 59 conditions at 50 Heatherway.
And we're back to Commissioner Poffenroth.
Thank you. This item is a third reading for an application for rezoning and subdivision that was submitted by Dunnett's Landscaping Limited for the property located at 50 Heatherway. The application is seeking to facilitate a multi-building residential development containing five 24-unit buildings, 12 5-unit townhouses, and a new public street. The application received first and second reading on June 10 following the required public hearing, and I can confirm that all legislative requirements of the Community Planning Act have been met. And the item is now before you to move forward with third reading, along with the necessary resolutions related to the subdivision.
Thank you. City Clerk?
There we go. In this case, we require five motions. So the first motion is approve third reading in entirety. Then we need to rescind previous Section 39 slash 59 conditions. Then approve new Section 59 conditions, and approve the third reading by title. And finally, approve the staff recommendation in the other section of the resolution.
So motion for third reading in its entirety. Counselors Redmond, Counselor Hickey on the question. All in favor signify aye, raise your hand. Contrary-minded? Carry.
Allow to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John. The zoning bylaw of the city of St. John enacted on the 15th day of December 2014 is amended by rezoning a parcel of land having an area of approximately 9.1 hectares located at 50 Heatherway, also identified as PID's 55124358, 00456640, 00456657, 00456665, and 55190227, from two-unit residential to mid-rise residential pursuant to a resolution adopted by council under Section 59 of the Community Planning Act.
Next was a motion to rescind the old Section 59. Counselor Lowe, Counselor Stewart on the question. All in favor signify aye, raise your hands. Contrary-minded? Carry. And then we need a motion for the new Section 59. Counselors Hickey and Killen on the question. All in favor signify aye, raise your hand. Contrary-minded? Carry. And third reading by title. Counselors Stewart and Lowe on the question. All in favor signify aye, raise your hand. Contrary-minded? Carry.
Allow to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John.
And finally, we need a motion on the staff recommendation. Counselors Hickey, Counselor Ogden on the question. All in favor signify aye, raise your hand. Contrary-minded? Carry. City Clerk?
And the final bylaw is 10.4. Again, another zoning bylaw amendment. This is for text amendment regarding excavation and filling.
Commissioner Poffenroth?
Thank you. Excuse me. This evening's final third reading is for an amendment to the city's zoning bylaw that was facilitated by city staff for a text amendment associated with the filling and excavating of land. The application is seeking to expedite the existing approval process associated with site preparation. The application received first and second reading on June 10 following the required public hearing, and I can confirm that all legislative requirements of the Community Planning Act have been met. And the item is now before you to move forward with third reading.
City Clerk, promotions?
Only two in this case. Approve third reading in entirety, approve third reading by title.
Move third reading entirety, Counselors Norton and Lowe on the question. All in favor, aye, raise your hand. Contrary-minded? Carry.
Allow to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John. The zoning bylaw of the city of St. John enacted on the 15th day of December 2014 is amended by, number one, Section 9.7 is amended by deleting subparagraph 9.71c2 and replacing it with the following words. Any work performed by a public utility or a local, provincial, or federal government or, number two, Section 9.7 is amended by deleting subparagraph 9.72c2 and replacing it with the following words. Any work performed by a public utility or local, provincial, or federal government or.
Thank you, City Clerk, and a motion for third reading by title. Counselors Killen, Counselor Redmond on the question. All in favor signify aye, raise your hand. Contrary-minded? Carry.
Allow to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John.
I'll go get the boss.
Thank you, your worship. Next, we would move to the item that was removed from the consent agenda, and that was the staff report on fleet replacement. On the agenda, it appeared as item?
56.
56, and it's now 14-1.
Okay, so 56 is now 14-1.
All in favor of the recommendation?
Thank you so much. Counselor Hickey, second again. On the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion, oh, sorry, Counselor, Counselor Redmond registers as opposed. Motion carries. Okay, next item, City Clerk.
Next is item 15.1, and this is under general correspondence from Citizen, Request to Present Regarding Job Growth and Low-Income Housing. The recommendation is to refer this to the CAO for follow-up.
Thank you. Counselor Harris, are you seconding that? And do you have a question?
I will second. I would like to comment to the CAO.
Yep, sure. Over to you.
Thank you. I think with the, I was waiting for like an actual.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think what I would encourage CAO to do is to feel free to pull some other counselors into that, too, if you are going to respond. I wouldn't mind having a conversation if they're looking to do that about some broader initiatives. So, might be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, got a motion on the floor and a seconder on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, City Clerk?
Next is the recommendation that came from committee of the whole. It's item 17.1. And it's recommended appointments to committees. And I can read those out for the public. So, the first recommendation is for the North End Advisory Committee to appoint Deputy Mayor McKenzie and Counselor Ogden for the remainder of their term on council. And to appoint Tamara Kelly for a three-year term effective June 24th, and Anne Driscoll for the same term. And to appoint Steve Belier, Ann McShane, Melissa Wakefield, Kelly Baker, Graham Stuart Robertson, Evan Miller, Jemiu Abdurrahim, and all for three-year term effective June 24th. For the St. John Community Arts Board to appoint Brittany Ewer for three-year term effective June 24th. St. John Free Public Library to appoint Elizabeth Krajewski for three-year term effective July 27th. Nominating Committee to appoint Counselors Stewart and Norton from June 24th to the end of their term on council. St. John Industrial Parks to appoint Bruce Wright, John Runsey, Mike Rekutyek, Edwin Bernard, Cameron Hughes, James Finch, each for three-year terms effective June 24th. To appoint Lois Vincent for one year term effective June 24th. And to appoint Counselor Lowe and Counselor Killen to the end of their term on council.
Okay, I'll take a mover and a seconder on that. Counselor Sullivan and Counselor Stewart on the, okay, I will, before I call the question, I'll just mention in the North End Advisory Committee, we are appointing to Mayor Kelly as the one-change rep for the three-year term. And we're appointing Anne Driscoll as the Crescent Valley Resource rep, just so that, because we wanted to make sure we had a rep from each of those areas. So, on the question, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carry. Thank you. I guess it's over to you, Counselor Lowe. Thank you. I'll take a seconder. Perfect.
We're going to close.
Yeah, we're going back into close. Thank you, everyone, for being here this evening.